It's clean and ready to go if you need it. Why don't we go in, take it, keep it offline, not pay that fee on there? Have Mr. Gibson look at that contract to make sure that, you know, if we need it cleaned in two years from now, are they going to hold us against any other problems in the contract? I feel more comfortable than him looking at the contract. That's staff recommendation.
And my question would be, guys, is by us not having it online, do we need that maintenance so that in the event we do need it, that it doesn't just sit there?
Well, the good thing about it, they come in a couple of years ago, and, you know, they did a total renovation of that tank. It's in really good shape. The tank's fine. It's just the filter.
Filter.
Correct.
And until we are able to put in new lines, new water lines, I think we need to keep it offline right now.
I guess we need to work on that. We'll get you back to us in a week. We may as well.
All about saving money.
Me too.
You're looking at it, save a little bit of money.
That's all I got on this show, questions.
Your application for your new electrician guy, does it?
It closes Friday.
Close on Friday? How many applicants we had, two for?
How many you had?
Two.
Two.
Only two?
That's it.
I'm gonna make a comment on that. If everybody's such knows in the charter, it reads that we do not hire from within. And we always try to. And I do know that there is an applicant that has put his application in. And I feel like we need to give first dibs on people that already work for us.
And if they're qualified, we do.
And one thing you gotta realize, this is not just electricity. This is doing all the instrument stuff and all that.
Instrumentation.
Oh, I mentioned this to Jim, and I think we're starting to pay out at too late to get a good person. I mean, you're not gonna pull somebody that's working at another plant that might could do the same job for the price we're paying them. They're just not gonna do it. So I think we're kinda shooting ourselves in the foot there with the, what we're offering to start somebody. And I think we should have a range of, depending on experience, and they're just saying sixteen dollars an hour, which is say...
Well, it's an important position, and we don't have much of a pool. I mean, two people, that's not much of a pool.
No.
Might be a good idea to go back and, for the city manager, when he wants to, might want to go out and re-advertise them. And maybe reword it.
I tell you, these guys is pulling wire. They're the electricians here. They're eighteen, twenty dollars an hour, you know? And that's just wire, you know? You're not gonna get anybody for sixteen dollars an hour.
I think you got a range of, I think it's sixteen to twenty-four based on their experience.
Is that what it says?
What we did was, we put based on qualifications, what we did advertise. But your range, it's approved by your, by your pay scales, approved by the board, I think sixteen, twenty, you know, based on.
Does the applicants realize that, you think, or they think they're gonna start out at sixteen the way we worded it?
We didn't put anything in there, or we didn't put the salary in there.
We put... We put no salary, just...
We left it open, yeah. Because that way, we're hoping to get more applications. And we're trying to have that discussion.
Okay. So just waiting, when's it close?
It's Friday.
We just have to take what we get, hope we get the bid.
That's all. Thank you, Eric.
Now, Ms. Lynn. Now we can get the cameras rolling.
Well, first item is the algae control units. I guess Jim's provided you with the quote that we have. They're basically a sole source provider. The only other ones that we know of are Australia and the Netherlands that manufacture these units. I'm sure they could provide a letter to that. You see the quote there? It's up to you whether you wanna go with them or not go with them.
Yeah, do we know this is going to work?
Yes.
We do know.
I actually had, I had a cert, well, we've got all kind of testimonials for people who have them that say they worked. Ten or twelve, fifteen ones that Kevin has contacted that said, yes, they worked.
Have you got them in treatment plants? I'm not talking much.
They've got a couple in treatment plants. Most of these are in ponds. The technology's the same. So as far as the technology goes, the technology doesn't scare me. It's sound.
And the thing that I'll say too is unless we've got another solution or a better solution, I don't know what else we can do to help these people that gotta have help. So I think this is all we can do.
This is the most economical and, I think, the best fit solution for our situation. We, I've got a whole book here of different proposals from different companies that are way more expensive than this.
Right.
And I'm not sure that they'll even work. Some of them, I'm not sure they'll work.
Feel good about this?
I do. I feel very confident in this.
Was this a company that we asked to maybe give us a trial run? And they refused to do that?
They'll give you one unit, maybe two, but, you know, the website says you must take as many units as they say your facility needs. And when I mentioned that to him, he says, oh, but we won't, we won't loan out that many units. You know, and I said, well, that's kinda what it says, you know? And he says, well, our policy is now only one or two units. So basically...
But they were willing to loan us one or two. If one or two wouldn't be sufficient for us.
But it's not.
But it's not.
But it's not.
So that's what their reasoning because that is not.
Right, right. So basically...
How much money would you talk to me about?
Thirty-nine dollars.
Thirty-nine dollars. You know, y'all, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
But that's why they're, are suffering, and it's not fair for them. If this was across the street from my house, and I was having to smell it every day, I'd be out already.
I agree. I mean, it's, it's intolerable.
And I know it. Y'all work hard out there.
It's intolerable. We've been fortunate. We've had some west winds and kinda given them a break. But it is now in the blooming cycle, and it's getting worse. And so when it starts dying, we're gonna have that problem all over again.
How long until they install?
Takes about two weeks to get them on site. Installation is, you put them in the water and plug them in. I mean, they're, they're simple units.
You ever been anywhere where we can pull that one?
West Coast BP more like it's a bush.
Said, we will assist you in installation for two units until you're comfortable. You guys are really comfortable with this install and what other?
You gotta drive some poles down in there to just slide them on so that they just float up and down the poles.
What, what are the other added things add to our total price?
Well, if we bought the sled, the mounting sleds, which is for like lined ponds, it's a big stainless steel, like sled. It has poles that come up that are stainless steel. And those are just under a thousand dollars apiece. So you're at, at six, four thousand dollars.
Six, four thousand. Now, what about, what about electrical?
They come with a hundred and fifty-foot cord. And we, Bob would just have to put us some receptacles out there and plug them in. You know, we may have to run some conduit. We've got power.
And I'm, I'm just asking, I know there's always hidden things that...
Right, well, we, we looked at that.
On their proposal.
We looked at that.
We need to know them.
Part of their first proposal was they would install the electrical. And it's like, well, we have an electrician. Why should we pay for that? You know, he can do it, you know? And he says that the power's already out there. And they just have to put in a few receptacles or wire them in direct, you know?
Do we have to use these sled mounts?
No, we're not going to use the sled mounts.
We had them pulled out of the bid. We had them pulled out of the bid.
Okay, what are we gonna use?
Uh...
We'll just drive some poles down, rebar conduit, you know, something like that for them to float up and down on.
So outdoor cowl, does it, and what y'all told, we're looking at thirty-nine thousand dollars?
Thirty-nine thousand dollars and some change.
And specifically, how do these work?
If you think about how your transducer works in the back of your boat, it's basically the same. It changes the signal wavelength. I mean, they've been using jewelry cleaners for a long time, same basic technology.
It just breaks the algae all up? Diffuses it?
It breaks the cell walls or the vesicles in the cells, and it, they just sink, and then they starve to death because they can't come up and...
Still will be there, just for them lobs that are the top.
They'll be dead, though. They'll be dead.
Right.
So they did just...
What does the lease agreement say? If we wanted to lease them, what responsibility?
Jim, you wanna address that?
I didn't see the full lease agreement, but when I started running the numbers, just the interest rate was about ten percent. So when I started looking, running the numbers compared to the outright purchase on there, it'd be hard for me to recommend ten percent interest rate on the lease. But no, sir, I did not have a...
Well, my point is, what responsibility do they have to release it versus if we own it? Then it's ours.
If you lease it, you, you, you do the whole thing.
They don't have any maintenance.
It's no clause that if after a year that you don't like them, they'll come get them or anything like that. Yeah, they have maintenance, but it's extra.
Ken, what can break all these?
It's a sealed unit. The problems that other places have seen is the, they don't clean the, the unit heads. So, and that, of course, messes with your signal because it's a line of sight signal. So, you know, it, as long as the water's clean, it just keeps going. These will run out about six hundred feet. So you need some on both ends to cover the pond.
How do you feel about liability part on the product part? What you saying?
In, in the States, most of these people are looking at four and five years out, and that's as long as they've been here. I haven't talked to anybody overseas that's had them. The technology's been there longer, seven, eight years kind of stuff.
Is there any warranty on them?
There's warranty, and I can't remember how far the warranty goes.
I don't remember what the warranty says. I don't think I brought that with me.
I think it's a two-year warranty, but I'd have to go back and look.
Two, three, or four? Maybe. I don't know.
What it is?
We can find out.
I would like to know if there's warranty and maybe on the maintenance program, but I said at the workshop the other day that we had to do something because every day, I mean, we're just wasting time.
Basically, the only maintenance is you go out about once a month and, and take a nice cloth and clean it. You raise them up and just wipe the face off so that there's nothing that blocks the signal.
So we don't need to, we don't rely on any maintenance contract?
No.
If we decide to do this tonight, how long would it be before you actually got them in the water and do them what they're supposed to do?
He said two to three weeks.
Once we place the orders, about two weeks before they're on site.
And that's even before they're in the water?
It, it takes, we'll put them in that day. You know, we've got, we've got power around certain places in the lagoon. With the cord, it's gonna take a day to install all of them. Take an eight-hour day, and they're, they're in. So then you're looking at two, three weeks, maybe three, and you start seeing where the algae's dropping. It, it takes a while to kill, especially the volume of algae we've got now. It's gotta penetrate a cone.
We're probably working at the end of August before we actually see the results we wanna see. Maybe plus that timeframe.
And two, is that something that we can do? When the season's over, we can bring those machines, and they're not just sitting out there and have water.
Exactly. We can unplug them, pull them up, and, and clean them and store them away until, you know, March or April of the next year.
And if you get ahead of the algae, you know, the next year, then you don't run into where we are now.
I'd like to go back, talk about this lease a little bit, man. I know ten percent, is that built into this twelve fifty-two twenty-one? That's already, that's already built into that. I mean, we, we could almost budget apps that'll just write a check for forty thousand dollars. And two, there may be something in there for a year from now that's just not working. There may be an out clause in that lease.
I didn't see it the first time when we were talking to him about it. He says, once you agree to lease them, you pretty much fulfill the lease.
I know, but I think we need to look at it, man. I think we all need to...
Tom probably needs to look at it, yeah.
We all need to look at that before we jump out and write this check.
I agree.
And we certainly need to help those people, but we still don't need to...
Well, I think the bottom line is, if you live there, there in Highland View, you want something done yesterday. You don't wanna sit around and contemplate whether a lease should be better than... I mean, we got the money. We can, we can spend the money. We got BP money to spend. We spent BP money on a lot of stuff. And, and this is important. These people are having a hard time. I mean, how better than to talk to some of them? And like you say, if you live there, there, you, he couldn't stand still forty dollars.
I'm not saying not do it tonight. I'm just saying we need to think about this lease, a better deal for the city. And as quick the timeframe, not change.
We gonna pay more money on lease.
But...
My ability. When you're willing on an outright buying, how much more money?
And, and as a lease, do you own it after three years?
It, it's a dollar, whatever you, in the lease, the way it's...
A dollar a week.
You bother you, that's right.
So what's the multiplier? Thirty-six times that?
All right, I'm gonna do this, and I may be wrong, but I made a thing. I, I have to agree with Rex on the, I think we need to do something. But I'm gonna make the motion that we just lease these things. Talking at thirty-nine hundred dollars and then...
What, what was the number, Jim?
What is it?
We need to be a lease.
You gotta calculate that, calculate that out.
He's got a smartphone.
You got a check.
All right, man. Get your math going.
Nancy, you press them up to work, it's two years.
Okay.
Good.
Forty-five thousand, twelve dollars each.
Two thousand dollars.
It's more than ten percent.
Two thousand dollars a year, man. That's kinda the way I look at it.
But I still think that, that at least if we're not having some equipment that we can't use if it doesn't... I mean, I feel quite sure on it. What do y'all think?
I just wanna get her done. I just wanna get her done.
We know what Rex wants. See, what you wanna do?
Get it done.
I know. Buy our lease.
What we got in the BP?
We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct, yes, sir.
We still have about over two hundred thousand if we went ahead and did the whole thing at once instead of doing a lease program. I just don't like the lease, I mean...
I don't like it either, but I'm just wondering under this situation if we're not better off.
Well, at, at the end of the day, we're, we're gonna be, if we're locked into that lease, we're gonna spend that money anyway.
Anyway.
It depends on if we're locked into it, but, you know...
So you wanna change your motion?
No, I mean, wait a minute now, I wanna know what y'all want too.
Well, second, yeah. I'll second. I told you I wanted to do... Second for discussion. Okay, let's discuss some...
Lynn, what you gonna do? You'll buy them?
I want the sonic disruptors. What, how y'all pay for it is up to y'all.
I know, that's the thing is. But at least, too, we pay that money. There will be hours that we could turn around and sell them for something, I guess, and...
Do we, do we write them a check for the whole amount to start with?
Twenty-five thousand.
There's like a down payment and then a balance.
Twenty-five thousand, three hundred down. And then thirteen thousand, seven upon installation.
Like two thirds and one third or something like that.
If there's no out, if there's no out clause, if the equipment fails and we're still stuck with the lease and there's no way we can get out of it, then that's the point.
That's what I'm saying, David. I'd rather tag.
I'm gonna change my motion to buy them.
And pay straight out?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion. And make a motion that we just go forward with the total price of thirty-nine thousand, thirty dollars for a purchase of this equipment.
And the money's coming from?
The motion, the money's gonna come from BP funds.
As a sole source?
Unless you got a better idea? Do you have a better idea?
Jim's speech.
It is, is a sole source, and this is an emergency situation. So we don't have any bidding issue.
As a sole source, and this is an emergency situation. That's my motion.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Thursday. Do I have a second? Second, about Commissioner, ask for any further discussion? Anybody in the audience? All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed? I'll just pass this five zero.
Got it, man.
Let's get on order to the night. I want Ms. Bronck going up this side and down this side, and then back up this side, down this side anymore.
Now, the next time, is the lagoon pipe replacement court. No, I guess we'll write that.
The water?
We have tried to solicit some other quotes, bids, proposals, or whatever. Has had no response from the other two companies that Mr. Smallwood provided for. The job's too small. They don't wanna mobilize from Texas or wherever they are, and it's just, you know, they don't wanna bother with it. So they basically told us, you know, it'd be, what, a couple of months?
It'd be a couple of months before they get around to scope the job. That's scary from where we are now, when you look at the lagoon pipe, so...
Other than these, we don't...
It's, it's almost, well, it is another emergency situation. If that was to have a catastrophic failure and all that water go into that canal and into that bay, you thought we were on the news before? That would not be fun. The potential is there. It may not happen, but something needs to be done about that pipe. And we are working under temporary conditions, not normal. And so we're having to rent the equipment, which is costly. So the longer we draw this out, it's gonna increase the cost of the, of the job.
We're talking twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and seven, three dollars? Where's that money coming from then?
We have that money in the, in the budget.
This is our election item, but we do have other money to repair and make some equipment that you could use us for this. So we could pour it from other areas, so we would have to limit some of the other stuff we're gonna do towards the end of the year, but yes, sir, we could come up with that. But you would also need to repair this as an emergency pond if you did it this way without bidding out.
Kim, is there any, uh, we have some money left, uh, or cleanup money, you know, Arizona? Is there any of that?
Yes, sir, there was money.
Could we use that? What? What, what was that? What was there?
A hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion, we'll, we'll use that out of that pool of money.
All right, we got a motion from Commissioner.
Jim, we're from?
We got a second from Commissioner Brazil. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, likewise, Mr. Brazil. Five zero. What else you got? Are you gonna spend all of it?
Man, you broke the bank.
You broke the bank. But it's for a good cause, it's gonna make people happy. I mean, I feel for the Highland View people. I mean, I've been over there, you know, talked to them, and it's terrible, terrible. So we, we gotta do something. All right, we, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Get her done. Next, we got a city engineer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, y'all have already talked about, most of the projects we're working on for you at some other point. So if you have any other questions, let me know, but I don't have anything else to add to what you've already talked about.
We wanted to replace that water, that drainage line that makes it faulty every year.
It did not get through the state budget. It was actually a pretty poor budget year for things like that.
Yeah, it really was.
But...
When can we retry it?
With the state, with the state, it would be January, but...
You gotta, you know, right this way.
We're working on some of that, yes, sir. We're still looking for, for that.
I know that, you know, the new law passed. Is that gonna help us in you, or is that...
We, we think it will, some. It may take a year or so to level that. No, it served it in the first year, but there's potential that it will.
Thanks, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Code enforcement, y'all got a thing in your banking? I wanna make a comment about the code enforcement. You know, when I first elected mayor, I had a lot of people say, Richie won't do the job. And he might have been a little slack, but he is working hard lately. He is getting me to report every week of everything he does every day. He's had a lot of pickup requests. So I think our code enforcer is going in the right direction, and I think we need to give him all the benefit we can. And if you do see something that needs to be done, let us know about it. And, and I'll make sure that Richie, he'll, he'll get on top of it. I know, I know he will. I've seen a lot of difference in, you know, piles being picked up on the street. We'd like to say to the residents, you know, let's, let's be, let's keep our city looking nice. Don't just throw all the stuff out. If you got something you can't take, you dump yourself, furniture, stuff like that, call City Hall. We'll come pick it up. We'll charge you. Can't do it for free. At least it won't be sitting on the side of the road, and we gotta go hunt it down and find it. So I, I just wanna make that comment on our code enforcer. I think he's stepping things up, and we're gonna be proud to have a code enforcer.
All right.
I don't have anything this evening. Does the board have questions for me?
Yeah, Matt, several weeks ago, you and I talked, for a month ago, maybe we started off when you first got on board, and talking about maybe a outreach program for the elderly, people that you called in and did check, gone through the police department. I didn't know you'd been working on that. Can you give me a little insight on where we stand and how it's going?
Yes, sir.
Has it, let me just say, has it Diane Sealy, you know, working on something with this?
Yes, sir.
Diana Burke.
Usually so.
And she, right after I was hired, she came and talked to me about her program. And you mentioned it just a couple of weeks after that, maybe back in February on... She has a, through her Christian Development Fund organization, she has a section that does a KISS program, they call it. KISS stands for Keeping Independent Seniors Safe. And she asked, the Mexico Beach Police Department, help her with that in Mexico Beach? And she asked if we would partner with them and do that, and we, we have. And basically, what we do is we're counting our eyes and ears. There's fourteen seniors in the city that we check on on a weekly basis. And an officer goes to their house if they need anything. If it's something law enforcement that we can take care of, we do. If it's something, you know, that we can, we'll refer it to Ms. Diana Burke. If they need a smoke detector or whatever, they need a doorknob changed, it could be anything. And so we, we have fourteen seniors right now that we check on on a weekly basis. And if there's any, if you have any other seniors that need checking on, we'll be more than glad to add them to the list.
That's one reason I wanted to bring this up tonight is because fourteen is a great start, but there are so many people in it. Anybody in TB land watching this tonight? I just, if you've got a grandmother, if you've got a mother, if you've got a granddaddy, anybody that you know that needs help, I mean, the police department might not be able to help them, but we'll find somebody that can help them. And this is something I've wanted to do since I've been elected, and you've got all the support. What number would be good for them to call you on?
Uh, they could just call our main police department number, two two seven, fourteen fourteen, and our secretary will put them in touch with me, and we can get them on the list.
I appreciate that, and I want to let Ms. Diane Burke know we appreciate all that she does.
I will. She, she's talked to me too, and she may have mentioned it to you.
I know, we're in length about it, and I'm just happy to see y'all working together. Anything we can do as a board to help you, I feel like we all feel the same way.
She's even mentioned us doing a.
Junior deputy?
Kind, yeah, a child mentoring program, so I don't know, we, that's just, we've just kinda kicked that idea.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, man.
Yes, sir.
And court?
We don't have anything on.
Okay. Mr. Brazil, what story was you?
Okay, I got one thing tonight.
Hold on.
Whoops.
I, I'm new to this. I'm new to it. Any citizens that wish to be heard tonight? Any citizens wish to be heard?
Yes, and why?
Come on up, Miss Lynn. I don't wanna live if we get you.
Boy, you'll hear about it if you did.
I wanna put in a request tonight. Um, I have been coming to the city meetings for a long time. And when they were upstairs, at times I was the only outsider. Okay? I fell back in February, and since then I have requested every meeting to have a meeting here, which y'all have done, and I really thank you for that. Our audience is better over here than it was upstairs. And I'm putting in a request that we have this as a permanent meeting room or there's other possibilities. We do play, pay county taxes. And David had suggested to me the other day, possibly where the commissioners, the county commissioners meet. Now they're just meeting one day a month supposedly, but they're having special meetings. But we, we meet twice a month, and that would be another alternative because we do pay county taxes. And that's a nice room to have something in. But, um, I've just, I've had people that came to this meeting, not tonight supposedly, because the crowd's not as good as it has been. But I've had people tell me I am so glad that we moved it on the ground floor, so I don't have to go up all the steps now. And so I'm just putting in a request that we have a ground floor meeting place, possibly later. We could do the Centennial building once they get the roof fixed. We've got several options. Rex said that they're gonna do away with the museum. That would be another one, but we don't know when that's gonna happen. But I am just requesting that we have a ground floor meeting place somewhere here in the city. And maybe we can have more crowds than we've got, you know, in here now. We might have to move to a bigger room, which I hope so, because I, I think the public needs to come and listen to what y'all have to say. But anyway, that's all I've got to say tonight, just a request for, um, just a room on the ground floor.
Thank you. I guess the last meeting we had after that meeting, it was up to Tuesday, that Wednesday I went. I spoke to some of the commissioners at the county commission, and they told me that they would get back with me, and I haven't quite heard anything back yet. But I do think that that is a feasible idea.
David spoke to two of them.
Spoke to two, and I have a call into Don Butler as well, he's got back to me.
Did they tell you the same thing?
David comes up.
Yeah, I know, that's what they said, but they wanted to run it by us on everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Brazil.
All right. The, uh, the coaches are practicing their All-Stars, so they couldn't, couldn't bring this. But they had a composite picture made from the day of baseball with all the teams and so forth. So they, uh, wanted me to present this to the city tonight, so I present that to you both.
Thank you, sir.
From the place and they'll show up.
Always proud of our little leaguers.
Two thousand fifteen edition of our citywide program.
Really nice to you, so. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner McCrone?
That's a better.
Uh, let's see here. I just wanna thank all the department heads that I've been out to see over the last month. Uh, I did get my tour of the water plant. It is pretty amazing. A lot of science going on over there. Went around with the, the police department this last week and have also made a brief visit out to see Lynn, but told her I'd wait until we get a little further along on this issues. But I just wanted to thank them all. They've been very helpful. And let's see, moving forward. Um, I have run into a small issue. When I took on this position, I said I was gonna be as transparent as possible. And I started a blog online, and I've also already have the meetings available to see online on my website. It's a real touchy area. I just wanna let you know that I do have a blog. It's, the replies are turned off. You cannot reply to it because of some sunshine issues, uh, but I'm gonna continue to look into that. Ultimately, I'd like for the citizens to be able to comment, uh, have me tell you all what goes on here and you can respond back. But there are some issues that I'm trying to work out, so I don't go to jail for it. But that's all that I have.
That's it. Mr. Thursby?
I don't have anything. I talked enough during the meeting. I don't really have anything tonight, so.
I only have one thing. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody, especially us commissioners, uh, the port authority has a meeting tomorrow. And everybody that can and will, please go, what, ten o'clock, Chuck? Ten o'clock out at the college. And this is something I really feel passionate about. We've got to get behind this port. We've got to make it a reality. It's gonna be a big change, game changer for our region, for Port St. Joe. So anybody can go to that meeting and certainly would appreciate seeing you there. And, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.